I call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Garden City Zoning Board of Appeals. It's Wednesday, April 23rd, 2025 at 6:32 PM. Our first order of business is a pledge of allegiance to the flag. If everyone would stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You seated? Does the secretary take the roll call, please?
Chairperson May.
Here.
Commissioner Price.
Here.
Commissioner Richard.
Here.
Commissioner Hickman.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Martin is not here, and Bullock is not here either. You do have a quorum.
Next, we need approval of the agenda. Someone cares to make a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve the agenda from our last meeting.
For this meeting.
I mean, this meeting. What do you mean?
You have to approve this agenda.
Oh, I thought it was the one from last.
No, that's the minutes.
He had a 50-50 shot.
Oh, well, then we approved the minute for this meeting's agenda, then.
Yes, does someone want to support that?
Second.
I thought it was last.
Take your role, please.
Commissioner Price.
Yes.
Commissioner Hickman.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Richard.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Now, we have approval of minutes from the special meeting of October 2nd, 2024. Need a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion. We approve the minutes of the special meeting of October 2nd, 2024.
I'll second that one.
Any questions or corrections on the motion? Hearing none, take your role, please.
Commissioner Hickman.
Aye.
Commissioner Richard.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Price.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next item is public comment on non-agenda items only. Does anyone wish to come forward and make a comment or a statement on a non-agenda item? Being no one, we'll move on to our first business item. This is PP B25-0002. This is 125, or 1125 Brant. It's consideration of requests for two-dimensional variances for the construction of a new single-family residential structure on the vacant lot. And we will be having a public hearing to allow the public to speak concerning this issue. Mr. Ortega, do you care to start us out, please?
Yes, Chair. Excuse me. Good evening, everyone. We're here tonight to consider these two variances for this particular site. This site is 145 feet in width along Brant Street, which is the front property line. And then it is 76 feet in depth from Brant, so it's totally a property of 11,000 square feet in area. It is located on the west side of Brant, just north of Market Avenue. As noted, the site is currently vacant, unimproved as law. It is located in our R1, one-family residential building. And the applicant is proposing to construct a Brant, new, single-family residential structure, which, of course, is permitted by right in the R1 zoning.
What's that? Repeat that, I'm sorry, I didn't catch.
Sorry, the applicant is proposing a single-family home, and that and those single-family homes are the principal permitted use in the R1 district. So, use is permitted by right in the district. But, as proposed, the new single-family residence does require two variances. So, if you go over those specifically, the first is a front yard setback variance. Zoning ordinance requires a 30-foot setback from the front lot line. And the applicant is proposing a structure to be located 20 feet from the front lot line. So then, the applicant is actually requesting a 10-foot variance from our standards. Secondly, the applicant, for the rear yard setbacks, the zoning ordinance requires a 35-foot setback. The applicant is proposing that this structure be located 26.8 feet from that rear lot line. So, the applicant is actually requesting an 8.2-foot variance from the normal standard. So, we're looking at this with regards to the various different criteria listed in the zoning ordinance. I'm just going to highlight some of those issues in summary. But the number-one thing we look at is practical difficulty. Practical difficulties do exist, and a strict application of the dimensional requirements may unreasonably prevent the use of the property from being used. This request for a front and rear yard setback is as less than was required mainly due to the fact of the lot's lack of depth. Strict compliance with that 30-foot front yard setback and strict compliance with 35-foot rear yard setback, it results in an 11-foot-deep building. So, construction of a structure that's 11-foot deep is just, it's not practical. One thing we want to note is that the applicant is proposing a structure that is wider than it is deeper, in an attempt to better utilize that width of the lot. It's basically located in the center of the lot. Structure, if this, if you, if the structure that is being proposed was deeper than wider, then the structure would be closer to Brant. It would have a much smaller rear yard than it proposes. So, and one other aspect is, as proposed, this 20-foot front yard that's being requested is actually further away from Brant Street right now, up in the right-of-way, than the houses in the median area. Now, that's due to the fact that these houses in the median area do front on Marquette and they're front on Manhattan. But, in fact, this house will still be less, won't be as close to Brant as the side yards of these other structures. So, in the end, we believe that, given the configuration of the lot, the proposed, and the fact that the, that the building envelope would only be 11 feet wide, that, you know, strict compliance with that setback requirement, we could, can be determined to be unreasonably prevent the use of the property for a single-family. And also, strict compliance with the setbacks could be found to be a necessary burden upon the property. Another aspect we're looking at, whether variance is warranted, is substantial justice. So, at the bottom of page two, there's the fact that granting a variance would be more consistent with the justice to other property owners granted. There are other instances in the city where a home is actually closer than 30-foot to the, the front lot line. And in those situations, typically, they, they are not adversely impacting the other adjacent properties. And so, allowing these, the grand variance variance would provide substantial justice to this applicant and property owner that's similar to the other lots and property owners that are in a similar situation. So, lot configuration necessitates having it closer to the street than is required in that 30-foot setback. There are, this is a more extreme case, because this lot is only about 76 feet in depth. Some of those other lots in the city that are closer, they're about, like, 100 feet in deep, 100 feet deep. But, in effect, they, some of them are closer than 30 feet to the front lot. So, substantial justice would be granted because those are allowed to be developed as single-family. So, then, this lot could also be developed as a single-family with a granting variance. Some other aspects, just to factor in is the fact that the permitting request variances would not negatively impact the public health, safety, and welfare. You know, the content of this proposed configuration will, or allow for that 20-foot front yard. It'll have a 26.8-foot rear yard. And then, this structure is going to be a sufficient distance from any other building that does not require any increased construction standards or required compliance. If this structure was requesting something that was closer to another structure, they might have to build it to a higher standard. But, they're still requesting a substantial distance from those side yards on the north and south side of the house. And they're still having a sufficient distance on the front and rear, so that there's no, it will not negatively, it will, it's not going to impact the public health, safety, and welfare by allowing variances. There are other factors to consider, and listed in the ordinance. One other aspect to just point out is point 11 when it comes to traffic flow. The applicant is proposing one curb drive and driveway approach for a single driveway to access the attached garage. This is similar to other adjacent lots in the area, which they also only have one driveway for regular access and parking. And they propose that, so we believe that the proposed variances will not make traffic any more hazardous than any other single-family residential construction in the city. They're just having one access point to create one intersection with the road, and so therefore, it's not going to be more egregious than any other single-family structure. One other aspect we'll get as well, and may want to consider, is the impact on adjacent properties of the city. Based on its location, we believe that granting the variance will not interfere with or discourage the appropriate development or continued use of adjacent properties, mainly because all of their adjacent properties have been developed in this area. And the proposed use will be the same use that's currently occupied all the other adjacent lots. To single-family residence, all the other lots in the area have been developed as a single-family residence. So, by developing additional single-family residence in the area, it's not going to make it the new act for others to similar effective use. So, in the end, zoning board appeals shall only grant a variance from the requirements of the zoning ordinance upon finding that the criteria described above have been that, the variances that are being requested. So, in making your determinations, relative to the requested variances, you should specify the grounds for your decision. But we find that the proposed development satisfies the requirements of the existing criteria and recommend that the ZBA grant variances as requested by the applicant. I can take any questions from the appropriate time.
Yeah. Configuration of this lot is due to a previous lot split. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Apparently, it was the lots that were approved with this configuration.
Wouldn't that make itself, how?
So, the applicant did not create the lot split?
Well, if he sold half of it, wouldn't it create the problem?
I'm sorry?
If he had, from what I understand, it went down Brant. And they got them, the houses on their streets, and then they got the long lots that are part of their property. In order to split it, that means the person on the corner of Brant, or not Brant, but Marquette.
Marquette and Brant.
Would have had to sold, oh, his part of it. Is, in other words, shorten up his own lot to make money, or whatever you want to call it. Wouldn't that be self-induced?
So, the issue is that the property of that person that created, that went through the applicant, lot split, is not the owner anymore. They've sold it to the current applicant. And so, they, so they aren't involved anymore.
So, it went.
They created it, but it didn't get approved.
So, when he sold it, the person that bought it didn't get the whole thing? He only bought half of it?
Correct.
Really?
But, because the current, the property owner at the corner that owns the house went through the lot split process, created this lot. And then, they sold that lot to the current property owner, this gentleman here tonight.
So, the Duval, the Duval family, the seller of this property, still lives next door?
Yes. I have to buy some knowledge of what they do. I'm not.
Do we have anything in writing from them? Any objections to where the structure is going to be placed? Because I don't see them here today. They haven't objected to anything?
We, it's my knowledge, we have not received any notification, or any comments from them. They, they did receive a notice in the mail, just as any other property owner, and they didn't, they didn't come back with any comments.
Okay.
It's my knowledge, unless it's clear.
Well, I got another question. I've been down that whole street from one end of Brant all the way to the other end. You only got two houses that are on Brant. One is off of Hennepin. And that house is just off of Hennepin, back a little bit, you know, down towards Ford Road. And they got a Hennepin address that are frontage facing Brant. That's not right. You're supposed to have a frontage. If you're on frontage, you'd be frontage, should be facing the frontage of your street.
But that has no effect on this.
Well, it's just that I had that situation happen right on the corner of my house, and people are still upset about it, but. And then, then there's another one further down that has, it's 29-something, that has the only house, there's only two on that one. But I was just wondering, you know, with the depth and all that, and the width, is that going to be conducive?
Well, obviously, when the lot was split, it created a non-conforming lot as far as our ordinances go. Maybe that needs to be addressed in the future.
Absolutely.
But it's Mr. Ortega's contention that since the applicant isn't the one that split the lot, he didn't create the.
Oh, so the applicant, okay, he's different from the one that owns the corner of the house.
Yeah, he's the one that created the problem when he splits the lot.
When he sold it, but he's gone.
Well, he's not involved in this now.
Yeah. So, that means you can do that all through Garden City. All these ones that got the long lots, they can all split.
That's why we should be talking about that.
Right, yeah. I mean, as a, I think one thing to speak to is that some homes got approved, whereas we have a situation in other parts of the city, and it hasn't occurred as of yet. There have been some instances where lot splits occur, but then they typically occur in concert with the adjacent property. So then, it's a split-join application, is what they typically call it, the two property owners agree. Then, they both do a split-join and create lots that are deep enough to have, create a viable building. And it occurs in different places, and usually, it's for both lots. There are some other configurations where it doesn't go all the way back. But like I mentioned, some of them go back about 100 feet. But then, even if it goes back 100 feet, you still, if you got 30 on the front, 35 on the back, it's a smaller footprint. But you can still get, get a house in that.
Can still put the average-sized ranch on that property.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
And so, that's what's occurred in the past. But it still seems a little wonky to me how that ever happened, because then, why is it that the rest of the lot doesn't get included with those 100-footers? And get additional, additional depth? For some reason, it didn't. Could have been back in the day, they were on different standards, or like, maybe a lot, with the depth ratio, and as long as they might have the width of that.
Well, I couldn't, I looked, and I couldn't find a standard for lot depth.
That's the thing, we don't have one anymore. I mean, excuse, forgive me, I don't know if you ever had one in the past, some communities.
When they're originally plotted, they were plotted with adequate depth.
Exactly.
But when you talk about lot splits, that changes the whole ballgame.
Exactly, yeah.
And a lot of time, you know, we're kind of unique in that majority of the city has, has been, and the blocks created are about 120 to 135-ish deep by about 60 foot wide.
But then, we have what I call the, you know, some of the larger super lots, like the ones where you have the lots that are 300 feet deep.
Yeah.
So, you know, we've got several blocks like that. And this is one of those instances where one of those average-sized blocks is coming right up against, like, a superside, a super block. And so, that's why the houses that front on Marquette go 300 feet deep on the west side of Brant. But on the east side of Brant, they only go about 120 deep, because then you get the next street, you get.
Yeah, Brown Court.
Brown Court. And even the fact that it's called Brown Court is kind of unique, because, you know, back in the day, when they were really planning it, in theory, they should have pushed Brown through going westward and connected the rest of Brown on the underside of.
But they didn't.
But they never did.
Yeah.
And that's occurred, that's occurred in other, other aspects of the city. And that's just delving more deeply into the development pattern of the city that, you know, might not be that relevant. And honestly, though, looking at other lots in the area, I only found a few that were of this situation. There's some on Harrison, on the west side of Harrison, North Penn, where there are these lots that, it's not one. I guess in theory, that when they were planted, they created these lesser-depth lots. Like I said, these are about 100 feet deep.
Because they back up, they back up to D plots.
Correct.
Yeah. There's another Bridge and Hartel. It was split, one, one yard turned into three.
Yeah.
And it, it got squashed in there pretty good. There's a few of the newer homes down, Berchlon, maybe, Far Side. There was one that was split into three, and they were kind of crammed in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, but we're talking 15 years ago, so.
But then, get back to your.
There's, there's some other situations like that, but I think we should look at addressing future problems.
Right. I mean, that's, that's the issue. Somehow, this went through. But you're right, we need to, by looking at the plan, if you look at the zoning ordinance, to see if we need to bring back certain things, such as a width depth ratio requirement or.
Yeah, we, we currently have a width requirement, but no depth requirement. And we have a square footage requirement. But when you get really wide lots, you end up with making the square footage requirement, but not having any lot depth.
Right. Exactly.
Yeah, we need to look at creating a.
Because you're going to have this mess all over the place.
Well, there's several areas where it can happen, yeah.
But the good thing is, again, what I haven't seen is very often. And I think a lot of it in the past was under previous planning of whoever.
Yeah, well, I think, I think there are some lots for sale in this situation that, that could have the same issue.
Yes.
So, I think something should be done to eliminate creating lots that don't conform.
Yeah, because we'll just have a whole lot of houses and no land, and everything's going to be on top of everything.
Yeah.
And that's, that's not going to make Garden City look worse.
In this, in this situation, we've got a lot of side yard. And because the neighbor's lot is deep, and there's nothing really behind that where this house would be going, it creates the illusion of having a lot of space back there.
Right.
But, and there's no other houses on Brant to, so you don't have a sightline problem where this one's closer than all the other houses.
Well, that's what I was wondering. Now, this is going to be set back, so you won't have a sightline? When somebody looks down the fence line, they're not going to see a house sticking out?
Well, there's no other houses to compare it to there.
There's two.
There's one on, that faces Hennepin, and one that faces Marquette. And they're both close to Brant. They're side yards.
There's the one that's on Hennepin, which actually, which I said was the address is on Hennepin, which is on the side of their house, not even on the front of their house. They're using that, Hennepin is an address, which, how can they do that? And the one further down, which is almost two blocks south of Joy Road on the right-hand side, which is 1740-something. And that one's a house, that's the only house there besides the white one that's. So, you know, if you're going to put a house, you put it up front, you look down the fence line where people can walk and that, and see, feel like more of an country-type thing, nice. Now, if you got a house sticking out in there, that sort of, I don't know if that would cover that far out.
It doesn't stick out in front of any other houses.
It won't.
Yeah. And if the, if the neighbors don't care, you know.
Yeah.
The other, that's actually a point out right here, is like, because the rest of the houses in the area that are closer, actually, front, north, the lots go north-south. So, they, their front yards are on Brown Court or on Marquette or on Hennepin. So, this.
The houses like.
Those houses.
Are much closer to Brant than what this home's going to be.
Right.
Yeah, the ones that went across the street.
Yeah, they're, they're. But we're not.
But you don't have a sightline problem when you're going across the street.
Yeah.
It's only when you look down the same side of the street.
That's what I was.
And those two houses, you just have their side yard.
Yeah.
But see, they have public information on that? Did it go out to the public? Because I know this came to us within a day.
This did need, we did get the notices out in time. Just that way, the holidays fell, the pandemic didn't get out at the appropriate times.
I was just wondering if the neighborhood was privy to this.
Yes, and we, I did receive one phone call from a property owner that wanted to know the setbacks. And I informed him of what the, how the, the, what was the front yard, what was the rear yard, that sort of thing.
Okay, well, let's, let's continue our discussion later and move on with the presentation by the applicant. Sir, if you'd like to come forward and make your presentation?
I think it's General, Bill Howland in Garden City. Love the community and love working here.
I think it was you, Fred, that brought up the house across the street on Brant. That's 11-foot setback to the curb. This one would be 26.8, I believe. No, 20, 20, sorry. So, it would be farther back than the one across the street. And they're both running the same way, north and south. So, going down Brant, I think it would just look like the right house. The house is on the east, the house is on the west. Plenty of yard in the front. I see 58 feet, if you want to call it front. And you got a good 36 on the other side.
Again, here, let's speak up.
It seems like this house here has plenty of yard space once you're in it, the circumference of it. This house was originally designed for 40-foot lots, so it fits good on a Garden City lot, per se. Another thing, I designed this house years ago for a, the old houses were ranches with shotgun garages in the back, which gave you no backyard. This house has a garage in the front, so it gives you a lot of backyard. You could take a look at a few of them. I just finished one on Roseland, one on Pierce, and before COVID, I built a few, three or four of them on Elmwood. So, we do the same house, pretty much, conform to the area. And we build a nice house. I am, we're hoping you grant it, because I think it's going to, I think it's going to look good on that street. Put the sharp. Another thing is, when we bought this off of Charles Duval, he was told, we were told that he split the lot, went through the city, and was approved to build. So, I thought, well, you know, two real estate agents here, no problem. Submitted my plans. Mario gave me a call, and Mark and them all just took the plans, and we were ready to go. And then, I got a call, and he was like, hey, you got a couple issues here. Originally, it was going to face the house facing Brant. He said, no, I flipped it this way, and to meet setbacks a little bit better. And I was like, whoa, I thought this house was buildable, I was told, this lot. So, he said, now, you got to go to zoning. I said, okay, well, I'll go to zoning then. So, that, this is where I'm at. I'm at zoning.
Yeah.
I was told it was a buildable lot. I would already have that house halfway built by now. But I had a roadblock.
Well, they, they got approval for the lot split, but I don't think they ever got approval to build a house on it.
Well, that's what he told us, but anyway, that's besides the point. We've followed the rules, and that's why we're here right now.
I appreciate that.
Well, we appreciate you guys. You, I build houses in a lot of cities. This is a very, very professional and smooth-transition city. You always got your bumps, you know, out there, but I don't have any problems with Garden City. I like Garden City. I can't say that for a lot of municipalities, let me tell you right now. But Garden City is a good city.
Well, I, we appreciate your business in Garden City.
And we will continue to do business in Garden City, but there's no more lots. So, I like your discussion. I think that you guys could do something. And my houses are very, remember, they're designed for 40-foot lots, and they conform to areas. I used to build them in Livonia. That's where we started, in the lower parts of Livonia. But I don't know. Things don't, people come back, people come in, and they're not as good of people. So, you got to take your business somewhere else. And we're over here now.
Okay.
So, we just hope you grant it, so we can build a nice house for you here on Brant Street, move a couple in there.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate you guys.
Were there any written communications?
Do you receive any, Mario?
Oh, well, I'm sorry, I got to get into the public hearing first. So, we'll do that. We'll open the public hearing now at 7 o'clock. Does anyone here wish to make a comment? No?
Did they say anything on that phone call?
We'll get to that in a minute. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing at 7:01. But first, we'd like to hear about the written communications, if we have any.
So, my office did not receive any, in the clerk's office, to my knowledge, although, was this included in their packet, Mario?
Yeah, this is.
Okay. All right. So, no, we have no written communications at this time.
Okay. Well, did you receive anything else?
We did not receive any written communications. I did receive one phone call from the adjacent property owner to the west. And he had questions about where the house was going to be located, the setbacks. I informed him that the brand is technically defined as the front yard. And that he would have 26.8 feet in the rear of the house, so it would have a front yard on the west side of line. Then, he asked about requirements for fences, and I said, that's up to the property owner if they do or not wish to apply for a fence. But I said, he, property owner of the west could apply for a fence, or this person, whomever.
apply for whomever occupies the new structure, if approved, could apply for a fence, but it's not a requirement, and I had been told that typically, that's not anything that the zoning board appeals require of someone to install, that's why I mentioned there. That's off the...
He didn't offer an opinion as to what he thought about?
I believe that there's words or something to that effect, because that's, there's nothing I can do about it.
Oh, okay. All right, then, we'll close the public hearing at seven oh three. And open this up for discussion on the board. Anyone have any comments or questions?
Actually, one, more so regarding the neighbor. Have you spoke to the neighbor about his sheds being on your property line?
Uh, he's the guy that's almost the property.
Right, I, I just noticed, looking at the overhead, because it's, the sheds here, it doesn't show a distance, but looking at it on the aerial, those sheds are right on the property line, which creates another headache for us.
You know, I think it's utilities, but they're actually kind of really have a problem with it.
Okay. And then all the oaks, possibly walnut, whatever you have in the back, we're not tearing none of that down, you're keeping that, which would be on the western property, not adding any kind of fencing, so no infringement upon that, to where we're gonna need a variance to come back off of that?
We have room to push that house forward too, so we're not so close to the shed. But I figured I'd back that, give them a bigger front.
Gotcha.
But it can be moved in if you wanted that a little bit more, but that house, that lot's huge. This house is only one, two feet wide, so it's got a shed by it.
Yeah, my biggest concern was the trees going landscaping that way, we're not back here in six months for another variance that, whoa, we moved a little bit further to the west, and so everything was thought out.
He doesn't have any problems, he's the one with DeValle. He lives at two nine nine one six Marquette.
Any other comments or questions?
Everybody good?
Yeah. I mean, while, while it, it does seem like it was a self-created problem, it wasn't created by the current owner, it was created by a previous owner and probably contributed to, by the city by allowing a lot split. So, I don't think it's gonna be, have much of an impact on the surrounding houses. It doesn't appear to me like it's going to have a negative impact at all in that area.
Other, you know, issues, side issues here, you know, should be addressed, but elsewhere than here, you know, with what we're considering right now. This, this lot owner probably shouldn't be penalized for, you know, and a discretion by the city for not having the requirements, proper requirements on these lots.
I agree.
Right, I think it opens our eyes moving forward.
Yeah.
You know, talk to other parents. Any others?
Anything else? Anyone wanna make a motion?
Yeah.
We have language for, we need two motions.
I make the motion to approve of and grant parcel thirty-five dash oh one six dash oh two dash oh three two three dash three oh one, more commonly known as one one two five Brant Road, a ten-foot variance from the Gardens, or City of Garden City zoning ordinance, appendix A, schedule of regulation, R one, one-family residential district minimum front yard setback requirement. This variance is granted based on the zoning board of appeals, making the determination that the site meets the approval criteria of section one fifty-four point four, four five three A. Specifically, we find the following criteria have been met. Public safety, the chosen configuration will suit the neighborhood and will not harm neighbors. Extraordinary circumstances, the lot was purchased in an irregular layout, which the owner did not create the problem. And impact on value, by moving the ten-foot, we will have no negative impact to the value of the land or adjoining neighbors.
Support?
Support.
Motion denied and supported, any comments on the motion? Take your role, please.
Commissioner Richard.
Aye.
Commissioner Price.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Hickman.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye.
That motion passes.
Okay, now we need a second motion for the rear yard, or no, that was for the rear yard, this is for the...
Eight point two.
Would be for the front yard, or the backyard.
I'll make a motion, make a motion. Make a motion to approve and grant parcel thirty-five dash oh one six dash oh two dash oh three two three dash three oh one, more commonly known as one one two five Brant Road, and eight point two foot variance from the City of Garden City zoning ordinance, appendix A, schedule of regulations, R one, one-family residential district minimum rear yard setback requirement. This variance is granted based on the zoning board of appeals, making the determination that the site meets approval criteria of section one fifty-four point four five three A. Specifically, we find the following criteria have been met. It creates no safety hazard to this property or adjoining properties, there is no negative impact of land values, and extraordinary, extraordinary circumstances is, with the purchase of this property, they took delivery of the property with said dimensions.
Support?
Second.
Questions, comments on the motion? Take your role, please.
Commissioner Richard.
Aye.
Commissioner Hickman.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Price.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye.
Your motion passes.
Okay, both of your motions for variance are passed, and you can contact Mr. Ortega to move ahead with your closing.
The regular...
No, I like them.
Oh, yeah, no, Mario had, we got copies of it.
Good guys.
Why didn't you give me one?
You're good guys, even if he's in the program.
Hey, if you're still looking for property, you might wanna, you might wanna talk to the powers that be, and instead of us waiting until she's married and has great-great-grandchildren, talk about maybe getting that property off that our future, future, future library may sit on. Wink, wink, nudge, nudge.
That would be nice over there.
Low jab from over here.
You don't wanna get into that.
Yeah, no. We've got a beautiful sign that's been there for about eight years, and that sign's gonna age gracefully for about another eighty.
Yeah, they did Radcliffe, but forgot about the library, what the hell?
Yeah, they have a piece of property, and they're not doing anything with it.
Yeah, I got a ten by ten section down on the beach in Florida that I wanna build, eighty-story condos in also, but...
Point is, they have, they put all that money in Radcliffe, and then they just ignored the library, and the library was way up before the Radcliffe.
Well, the library's kind of on its own.
Get the, get the wheels turning, and let them know, money now works better than bills later.
Well, we don't got a lot of them, we're small builders. We're small builders.
And we're not talking like a Toll Brothers type of development, the property would probably hold two, possibly three residents, well situated, room, room to grow, start with one.
I'm more comfortable with the situation now that I've been in here, because I don't think you guys are gonna do nothing to make anything improve.
We like to, we like to see progress.
They build a lot of dumb stuff in some cities, like, I live out there, we went out there years ago, I built when the kids were little, and now they're just building stupid stuff everywhere. The commission down there, the zoning board, I don't even understand how they handle this.
If it looks big and has pretty shrubs, approved. That's about it.
I'll see ya.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
Okay, next item is other business and discussion. Maybe we can discuss what would be necessary to eliminate the problem of splitting lots that don't conform, and maybe we need to add some more regulations to the schedule of regulations.
I think, in the normal process, the, whenever lots that are submitted, they, they go to the, the city setter, and they do come to the zoning administrator for review, and now, obviously, when it comes to this one, I recall talking to the property owner that preferences would be required, and it's not anything that can get approved, and it must have gone to the council to get approval, but we can...
I wasn't aware that the council had to approve lot splits, do they?
You know, I'm not exactly sure when we do, what triggers that, because there's a couple different kinds, there's a split join, sometimes when there's combinations, I don't believe combinations go to council, but it is discussed, but I think you're right, at the planning commission level, we can look at amendments to the zoning orders that codify what the policies are, because right now the policies are not officially the zoning orders, we can put them in the zoning orders, and also take a look at the land division regulations, typically that's something that is in, technically it's not a zoning order, but it's in the general regulations, and typically, unfortunately, what happens is like, a lot of them are related to platter, in the original platters, but obviously, as a mature community, we're not getting a lot of plats anymore, so usually it's about amendments to those plats, and making sure that whatever verbiage is in the general regulations ordinance about amending the plats, is technically, this is, whenever a split is done, it's amending the plat, because like, the legal definition of that lot, like, if that was lot twenty-two, then the legal definition is southern half lot twenty-two and the northern half lot twenty-two or something.
Yeah.
Meaning...
Well, maybe the only thing we need to do is, along with the lot width and the square footage of a lot, maybe we need to add something that says what the lot depth must be, the minimum depth of the lot.
What would the, what would legalities be in moving forward, we talked to the powers that be, whoever it may be, if a lot split is warranted, it comes before a zoning board or somebody else first, the zoning board, whoever's on it at that time, they can give the okay to give the variance for that property moving forward, and it avoids this, so it comes before they're allowed to...
It's a self-created problem now.
But before they split that lot, they come, hey, this is sensible...
If we do that to allow it, then that's a self-created thing.
Not to the new buyer.
But I think what the key would be is just to make sure...
You know, if they came and we said, this is a variance that we're willing to give you, if you still wanna split that lot, this is what it's gonna have to be, and if they don't feel comfortable selling it with that...
Can't they only do this with the corner lots, anyway?
Well, it's, it's only available with the, yeah, the deep lots that sit on the side street.
Yeah. Well, no, not so much, because I, I think there's two properties that we have, that there's two residents, and the lot is split to where there's a home in the back, there's a driveway that goes up.
They share a driveway?
I believe there's two that I, that I'm aware of.
One that sits behind it, yeah?
Yeah, which creates even more of a headache.
Right, and then one or two problems, and this is a great conversation, because actually, the planning commissioner right now is going through, doing a master plan amendment to deal with residential lot configuration, and also different residential housing types. We have a public open house to talk about the different type of housing type to allow, and one of the next things we're discussing, going to be discussing is where we can have different types of housing, and what part of that discussion is, at the planning commission level and at the city level, so obviously, as CBA members, you're more than welcome to attend, I'll make sure that you're advised of any other future meetings. The idea of also possibly, given the current configuration of lots, and given the current options, what are the, where in the city could create other housing opportunities? Because we've talked about the idea of making sure that people, if they needed a different housing type, if they don't want to, they didn't wanna move along anymore, if they didn't want to shovel the snow anymore, where, what type of housing could they have in the city to stay part of Garden City community, and not necessarily be forced to move to another place outside the city? So, that's just a broader discussion about, before we get into the nitty-gritty or something like this, I think that addressing this issue, we do look, have to look at the ordinances to make sure where, where the lot, lot depth situation exists, and making sure, I mean, there's minimums for that, or something that affect, because one of the things, or the planning commission's concerned about housing was, in the current master plan, before we amended, there was some discussion about what to do with these deep lots, what to do with these three hundred-foot deep lots, and there are different options. Some of them talked about putting the streets through them, like, like we were just talking about, and obviously, something like that is, even if you put it in the master plan, it's very, very, very difficult task, it's difficult, because you'd have to convince every property owner along the way to sell their back hundred fifty foot, and then be willing to have a road go behind them, and another house built in there.
Yeah, I don't think that idea came...
We can't afford to fill potholes, let alone put in new streets and infrastructure.
Yeah.
Exactly, that's why the planning commission said, well, we have to come up with other alternatives, so, something, talking about this, what to do with these lots that are the three hundred-foot deep that are adjacent to the rest, to a side street.
Lazy rivers.
What do we do with it? If, if any...
Yeah, I mean, building on them is, is fine, but they should conform to minimum standards to do that.
Yeah, or we'll be here all the time.
Or we'll have the situation over and over again.
Constantly.
Yeah, so at a minimum, you have to make sure that the situation doesn't affect you.
Okay, then. Well, any other business or discussions?
Yeah, good seeing you guys after six months.
Wow, wow, huh?
Good seeing you after six months.
I thought you joined the Marines with that haircut.
Anything?
Like my couch too much, that I could...
You guys have anything? Any zoning, any zoning discussions you wanna talk about?
No, can I get rid of that house on the corner that covers us? That was with Jim Barker's situation back in those days.
Oh, jeez.
They, they, they put the same thing like they did this one, but there was, in that one, they, they, they rubbed it underneath the rug, totally, they put that house on Catherine and Garden, right on the corner there, and it's a modular home, and...
It's more like a trailer.
Yeah, and we were pissed, because it's ten foot off the house, it, guy's bedroom, he was so pissed, and they built that house there, and nobody knew about, none, we never were informed about it, all of a sudden, we had cranes and sections in the middle of our road.
Right.
Yeah.
Wait, where at?
Didn't it have a foundation or basement first? And then, it had a foundation or basement first, and then it had that modular home put on.
And then what they did, when they put that on there, when they built that thing, they couldn't use a garden address, Garden Street address, because there is no houses on Garden Street, it's only the two-house thing, right? So, what they did, there's a big oak tree right beside it, and they put the address and the main door, they call it the main door, it's the side door, the trailer, and it's five foot from the big tree, and he's got a little deck that he goes out that way, but the frontage, he made it this way.
On the southwest corner?
About our daughter's house.
Mr. Corsor's house?
Your daughter wants that.
Is that who, do you know who did it? No, we were so pissed, I mean...
Okay.
Very well. I was gonna mention earlier, guys, about when someone said a house behind a house, my wife grew up in a house on Hennepin between Brant and Henry Rough, on the north side of the street, where the house was halfway between Hennepin and Bach, way back in the woods there, and it had a driveway going all the way up between the houses.
Really?
On Hennepin, and that's where she grew up, in that house that was behind.
If you look in that, that trailer house, there is no backyard there, it's only like four foot, and they're ten foot from the other house, and he, and he, and to the side of the house, he's only got a short period to the street of Catherine, and he's got a little bit where he's got his little shed-type thing there, it's like, it looks like crap, and it's way out of sync of the whole neighborhood. I mean, the guy's working on it, I mean, give him credit on that, but it wasn't, I don't think it was him that did it first, because that's been a while since...
Yeah, it was sold, I think, two years ago.
Yeah, that was Jim Barker's little slide thing with the zoning and all that crap. That's just what we're going through right now with Radcliffe, all that crap that's being done, when it should've been before, they built the inside, they should've did the outside, the roof and everything. I don't know what's going on with people and these council meetings and that, they just do what they wanna do and hail with the people, you know?
They're in the right circles.
Yeah.
Okay, well, the next regular...
It keeps going around.
Do we have anything for, I saw that, that's just, if something comes up, is there anything in the works right now?
And do we have anything for next? I saw that, that's just if something comes up, is there anything in the works right now?
You wouldn't have any, you don't have any variances or anything? Uh, I'm gonna have a discussion with, uh, the department of state, the building director. Might have a question for other interpretation for you. Mind you might not have...
Oh, really? Okay, well, next regular meeting is Wednesday, May twenty-eighth, if needed.
Well, we know that won't be... We'll see you in six months.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's adjourned, or meeting's adjourned.
Motion is adjourned.
Motion is adjourned too.